Damage also, as you can see, the roof of the porch has collapsed. There's also an accessory structure on this property. We are seeking a demolition order for this project.
Mr. Keefe?
Yes, sir. It looks like we have a consent to demolish.
That's what I was asking.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the order and report the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case and to order the property.
Wait just a minute, Mr. Keefe, before you do that. I've got to open it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And close the public hearing. No speakers, right?
There are no speakers.
Okay, go ahead.
Can I pick up where I left off?
Yes, sir.
I'll start it over. Thank you, Mr. Chair. To adopt the order and report the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case and to order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within thirty days, to order that the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling, and if the owner fails to do so and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, and to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, next case.
Okay, our next case is MH 1085-2015. Property owner is Tonto Morrison. Property is located at 3523 Cumberland Road. This is a unsecured structure also, dilapidated. There's an accessory building on the property as well. We're seeking an order for demolition.
There are no speakers.
Open and close the public hearing.
My computer just went way back.
I'll take it.
Mr. Keefe, take it.
Thank you. Make a motion to adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case and to order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within thirty days, to order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, and to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Unanimous.
You owe me one, Commissioner Fairclough.
As soon as I opened my mouth, it just, the screensaver came up. My bad.
I had a mouth.
Our next case is case number MH 1023-2015. Property owner Stacy L. and Ernestine Carthon. Property is located at 48, 4813 Battery Court. This property is a burnt structure again. It is unsecure. There's an accessory building on the structure as well. We're seeking an order for demolition.
Okay, any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Open and close the public hearing. Mr. Fairclough, you got it this time?
I'll try this time. Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the order and report the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case, that we order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within thirty days, and we order inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, that we direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Our next case is MH 1110-2015. Property owner is Carla Francis Gibson. Property is located at 5348 Chickenfoot Road and 2787 McCall Road. This is, there's two addresses for one property on this. The structure is unsecure and dilapidated. There's two accessory structures on the property, and this is debris filled from where a mobile home was removed from the property and they just left all the trash there. We're seeking an order for demolition on this property.
Okay, any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Open and close the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Your wish is borne.
I move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in this case and order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within thirty days, and order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, and to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
Second?
It's a move.
All right, second by Mr. Lancaster. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item six.
Yes, sir. Item number six, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, is consideration of an interlocal agreement on our homeless initiative, which includes approval of two new positions and associated budget revisions. This item was considered at the Finance Committee meeting on November the 5th, but because of the significance and importance of the homeless initiative, I thought it would be appropriate to include it on an item of business and have a little bit of detailed discussion. So if I could, I'd like to give you a little bit of background about what was presented at the Finance Committee meeting. As you may recall, the city council, as well as the commissioners, have included homelessness on the top of their strategic plans. Back in May, there was a joint meeting regarding this issue. We actually had speakers that came from Wake County, as well as the city of Raleigh, to tell us about their homeless initiative and philosophy. Based on the discussion at that meeting, one of the topics that came to fruition was the discussion of the need for a homeless coordinator. And I believe out of that meeting, the thought was to move toward developing a job description for a homeless coordinator. In this package, we are recommending two new positions, a homeless coordinator, and basically, the coordinator would begin to implement the strategic initiatives that would be developed together jointly by the city, as well as the county. They would also work together in assessing the, and coordinating the resources among the many providers in the community, and also work in collaboration with the local governments, the city and the county, as well as all the agencies that provide services in the community. In addition, our recommendation includes a new position, which is a data and evaluation analyst position. This position would manage and analyze the homeless management information system. This is a system that is required by HUD, and each agency is asked to put in information so that we can begin to gather some information about who the homeless are, what are their needs, and to begin to track that so that we can strategically identify the appropriate resources that are needed by the homeless in the community. So, in addition, in the package this evening, you'll notice we've included an interlocal agreement. The interlocal agreement does two things. First of all, it includes reimbursement from the city of Fayetteville. The city of Fayetteville included $50,000 in their budget for the homeless initiative, and as you recall, we allocated $100,000. In addition, the interlocal agreement calls for a homeless committee. The homeless committee is made up of city staff and county staff, the community development departments from the city and county that are both involved in the homeless initiative, as well as this coordinator position. The thought process is that this committee would continue to work to identify the appropriate strategic pathways for addressing the homeless issues in our community. And finally, out of the $150,000, $63,777,000 would be included for the remainder of this year for those two new positions. $9,000 would be set aside for the homeless management information system fee. And finally, the remaining $77,223 would be utilized for services. Specifically, we're targeting rapid rehousing and housing funding for those who may be at risk of losing, of being homeless. And so, I would be happy to answer any questions. This was approved by the Finance Committee, and it also includes the budget revisions to put this in place.
Mr. Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Want to make a few comments about this. First of all, I need to congratulate some of the people that have been working, what they've done with the veteran services in our community is very impressive. I think it's something that we should be proud of, and, you know, I don't think anybody here is going to claim that there's not a veteran who may be homeless on our streets, but we have sure done a great job at making sure that they are taken care of. And it seems to me that what we're trying to do now is to take it a step further. And I am a little concerned about the process that, where we're going on this, because it looks to me like we're trying to take a broad brush and treat homelessness like everyone is in the same position for the same reasons. And for those that know me know that I like to say there's causes and effect. Well, the effect is homelessness, and the cause can be many different things. The cause can be mental health issues, the cause can be substance abuse, the cause can be economic, or many of us know that the cause sometimes can be choice. And it does seem to me like we're looking at hiring a person to take this broad brush approach to it, whereas we need to get, drill down a little bit deeper and to see if we can take care of this issue. According to our numbers, the county is making a significant contribution, they're up to sixty, almost $64,000 for six months' work for two positions. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, my math shows that that's $126,000 for two positions. Is there a breakdown for what sort of pay code, pay scale that these two people will be in, or what their actual positions will be for the public and?
We, yes, sir. We have that, that's been, I don't, do you have that, Tracy? I don't have that with me at the meeting. I can certainly get that information and provide it to the board.
Yeah. And the other thing that I would, I would ask is, if we do go down this path, you know, the number of homeless in our community are more centralized in particular areas, and, you know, we're submitting two-thirds of this budget moving forward, and, you know, homelessness is not in one, throughout the whole county, but it is concentrated. And I would ask that our, our, our other elected officials look at contributing to this point, to this, this issue that we all have to deal with in equal amounts. Thank you.
Mr. Evans, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that. First, I have a question for the manager here, and then I would like to ask my colleague, Commissioner Keefe, a question about a comment that you just made as far as concentration is concerned, because I'm not understanding that one. Or I could ask you later on. We don't have to take up time now. But the two positions, and maybe I missed this, or, or some, and what Commissioner Keefe said, that it was roughly $126,000 for these two positions. And I heard what the intent is, but what's the end result of it? If it's, if it's for six months, is this for a period of six months? Correct? What's the end result? What do we look forward to happening at the end of the six months?
No, our recommendation would be beyond six months, that these would be permanent positions.
Okay. Is there still an end result for these positions?
Yes, sir, absolutely. The, it's critical that we begin to work, there are many, many agencies in this community that provide some amount of services to the homeless community. We believe there needs to be a central point for gathering those resources and trying to bring those resources together to provide the best services to the homeless in the community. The homeless management information system is an excellent vehicle for beginning that process. The data evaluation position will work with each and every agency in the community as they enter information in about each homeless person that they encounter and that they provide a service to. That will give us the information that we need to determine, why are they homeless? Is it an economic issue? Is it a mental health issue? Is it a substance abuse issue? Is it a housing issue? That information then will help us to, in the resource and referral area. It will also help us with step two of the process. This is step one. We need someone to coordinate the resources. Step two is, what is going to be our strategy for addressing the homeless issue? One example would be the Family Endeavors Veterans Issue with the VA Hospital. Their philosophy is housing first. That's, we've had some discussion with some providers in the community about that philosophy. That philosophy is, in order to help them address the substance abuse or the mental health issues, they first have to be in housing, and then you begin to address the mental health piece, or the substance abuse, or the employment piece. But the housing is the root component. There are other philosophies, but that's one philosophy. Next year, in the budget process, I'll be making a recommendation for funding above the $100,000. This is step one. The step two is the service piece and the philosophy. So once we get the coordinator on, this homeless committee, made up of city employees and county management staff, and this homeless coordinator, are going to begin to develop the strategic, our strategy for addressing the homelessness in our community. And I know that's a long-winded answer, and I apologize.
But that's okay. That's what I asked for. Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, just two, two more things, and I'll make them brief. When speaking with Wake County, as well as the city of Raleigh, did they share with you and others what they did as far as shelter, or maybe I should not say shelter, but housing is concerned? Is there something that is appealing enough that we may want to go that route here in Cumberland County? Or just exactly, did they share with you, and is it effective for them?
Yes, sir. I believe it's been effective. They have, have had the opportunity to have some public-private partnerships to develop some housing for the homeless. I'm not sure that we have that same opportunity here, but there are other ways to get at that. One way, and is working with landlords, and to, some of the $77,000 that we're recommending for the rapid rehousing, or for those who are at risk, is to work with landlords in the community and to pay their rental for a period of time to begin to address some of those issues. That's two-pronged. First of all, you get that homeless person off the streets and in the housing, but it also puts money back into our economy because it helps rent some homes that otherwise may not be rented. So it's two-pronged. We're working with business owners in the community, but we're also helping the homeless have, get homeless off the street.
Okay, and finally, Mr. Chairman, and to my colleagues, and to our manager, Ms. Cannon, and her staff, thank you so much for what you all are doing to contribute to eradicating homelessness here in Cumberland County. I think that we, as an organization, as a group, should be commended for the efforts, and our staff should be applauded for everything that they're doing. Thank you so much.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I'll address just a couple of issues. And, Mr. Evans, you asked, and I think the county manager was completely, in terms of the Wake County, the difference between our community and what I heard when it came out of Wake County, and I think that this is, anytime we deal with this, this can be initiated and driven by government, but it can't be solved by government. You've got to have some private entities involved in this. That's what it did up in Wake County. We were up at DSS, and that's what they talked about. They talked about the developers in that community stepping forth, being able to give back to that community, and I think if we don't put that out there and challenge our developers and those folk in this community to come forward, we won't solve this issue. It can't be solved by government alone. So that was one of the, I think, one of the big pieces that came out when Wake County came to talk to us. So that was one of the big things, and I addressed that. Manager, you know, I see that this, the interlo, the agreement with the city, and, you know, not beating up on the city, anybody else, but boards change, and there is a 60-day out on this agreement. Are we prepared, and financially, if we have to go this alone, to go this alone? Because it's a 60-day window for either party to end this agreement. Now, we're doing double what they're doing, but eventually, if that becomes a concern, do we have those resources to be able to address that issue?
At the current amount, yes, we could do that. It would be my hope that in the coming year, that our recommendations for funding from the city and the county would be equal amounts from the city and the county. Depending on the amount, we might be able to cover the city's portion for a, for a period of time, but I'm not sure that we could completely sustain it on our own for a long period of time.
And, and so I would end with this, Mr. Chairman, that I know that the mayor and the city council have talked about that this is an initiative of theirs, it's a priority of theirs, and I think that we would be remiss if we didn't encourage them to step forth and continue this agreement and turn it this, so that we can attack this issue in our community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fairclough?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not one for speaking a lot in a meeting, but I just want to say a couple of things about this. I've been on two committees that, that have, have brought this to this board, okay? The first, the first one was the City Council Liaison Committee, and we discussed that, and we had the, correct me if I'm wrong, what, the name of the group was Continuum of Care? Is that the name?
Yes, sir.
That's who, who helped, helped us get started with this, and the city and the county liaison committee bought into it and brought it to our respective boards, and so some action is, is, has come forth as a result of this. And then, of course, the Finance Committee, you know, has, has considered the money that we're putting into it and how we're going to spend it. So that's, that's, again, where I'm involved, and I've chaired both of those committees. Anyway, so, what I want to say was, you know, I've, I've been real skeptical about how government gets involved in trying to solve homeless problems. And you don't solve them, but, but you, you, you can, you can help deal with them, and you can show that this group can be very responsible in, in not maybe ending homelessness, but helping to manage the issues. The issues in homelessness, homelessness, we know are multifactorial, okay? And there's no point in, in rehashing all of that. But I believe that, that, first of all, that the state and the federal governments abdicated their responsibility, and a lot of those people out there that we know is homeless, formerly, formerly, would have been institutionalized. Certainly, we, we're not trying to institutionalize people, but some, some of the people that are on our streets, they can't help it. They're, they're there because they were, they were put there and they have anywhere else to go, and, and so, we, the cities and the counties, the local governments, have had to pick up that responsibility, and that's part of what we're doing. So if, if we're going to commit our taxpayers' resources to this, then, then we have to ask, we have to ask three things. We have to ask who, why, and what. The who, the who is, is what, what these people, part of what they'll be doing. They'll be getting a census to the extent that they can identify the individuals, if they can get them to cooperate, and tell us who they are, how they got here. The why, the why is how they got here to this situation, what brings them, what brings them to this particular situation, and what do they need that, that either government can, can provide, or those other resources that we talked about that are private resources, what can they provide? And, and so, our responsibility is, we believe, to, to develop this census of the who, the what, the why, and the what, and, and get, and get this ball rolling as best we can. The, the group that took on the veterans homelessness have done such a tremendous job. We, we know we can make a difference, and it's not that expensive, and, and what we're, what we're committing now is just to grasp the grassroots, ground level, finding out who, what, and why. And that's, that's what this is about, and we, again, applaud this board for, for being involved and being able to do this.
Mr. Evans, you ready again?
Yes, sir. And, and I promise, this, this is it. I, I just want to say that Commissioners Keefe and Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Fairclough, I think that we all know that we're not expecting government to take just control of everything and do it. What I was applauding us for doing is doing our part in giving a handout to help somebody up instead of trying to control things. And that's what, I think that's what the citizenry needs to know, is that the seven of us sitting here, we're just as equally as concerned as the next person, and we're going to do what we can but don't. Expect the government to control it or take care of it, is we're going to look for, as our manager said, we're going to need help from private entities, funding, whatever the case may be. But what I was saying is thank you to everyone for at least looking at this situation and moving forward with it. I'm done.
Okay, let me make a few editorial comments, in a way of reminding the board that this was one of my goals this year. The second, as chairman, and of course, I can't do it alone, you can't do anything by yourself on this board, it takes all of us working together. But then the next thing is, we had a strategic planning review of our goals, and this was a great topic of conversation and strategies, is trying to reduce it, we'll never solve it completely. And then we have received a grant, and the Alliance Group is working to reduce the recidivism of the people in the jail when they're coming out, and they can't do that alone either. They've got the community partners working with them, and their goal is if they get five people, that they can reduce the recidivism that occurs in the jail for the homeless people. And the key to that is housing. We also had the joint summit, if you will, with the city, and I think out of that grew the idea that we would have a coordinator. And at that time, they had budgeted $50,000, we had budgeted $100,000. But it was agreed upon on that meeting, if I understood it correctly, that we moved forward with, with trying to reduce homelessness. And then the, the other thing that we can't forget is, we can't forget the faith community. The faith community does a great deal in this community to help with this problem, and, and sometimes it goes unnoticed. unnoticed. Uh, there are even other agencies that, uh...